Welcome, Mr. Governing Board to order. Ms. Catt, do you lose the pleasure moment?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with its own liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Thank you for all attending today to our study session. We will move on, it was staff will report and respond to the governing board regarding the hybrid learning model in Yuma Union High School District number 70. Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, President Townsend and board members, thank you for being here for an extra, extra meeting this month. And we're, I'm so thrilled to have the folks with us in the audience who will be presenting, sharing, as well as answering questions. I'm going to start this off and then we have a progression of presentations for you. This is designed for you to be able to interact with those who are presenting and ask questions. But most of the questions and answers, we're hoping, if it's about instruction, we're hoping that it can work through until the last and Mr. Brooks will be a part of the teaching and learning organization. But it is, this is for you to be able to interact and ask questions. So we're here today because this is our second study session and it's our goal to share and talk about results as well as future plans for Yuma Union High School District families and staff. The global pandemic has resulted in a complete change in how we live and work as human beings. In Yuma Union High School District, COVID has changed the delivery for teaching and the engagement of the learner. For Yuma County, COVID has illuminated the forward thinking of leaders over time, but it has also illuminated the fact that the standard of living and learning are inequitable in many ways. Yuma Union High School District surveyed parents, community and staff in two separate efforts prior to the beginning of school year 2020-2021. There were clear and competing messages that came from those surveys. It was clear that expectations for health and safety were the primary concern. It was clear that with the inconsistencies in actions of governance, combined with the unknowns around the novel coronavirus, people fell into divided factions. School boards and superintendents were left to answer to confusion and anger and somehow demanded to be provided all of the same service during that very and is continuing to be a very uncertain time. Also quite clear was the governing entities would provide a storm of guidance, but little to no action steps. Never in my career have I heard local control more often than I have during this time. It became a very popular sentiment from leaders. It was clear that our teachers felt strongly that families and students who chose to be home due to health and safety concerns, family needs, and all of the other unique circumstances should not be left without education. Students are our why and they are our work. There's a ridiculous notion that's sometimes thrown about, social media and otherwise, about my staff and educators in general being lazy or not using time wisely because of this differing delivery of instruction. I hope to be crystal clear tonight. The easiest offering in all ways of this district would have been to remain in remote virtual learning. Yuma Union High School District was prepared. Because of leadership over time, we had one-to-one devices. Because of our financial stability, we purchased hotspots early. My teachers came to work, my staff came to work when their contract started for school year 2020-2021. They worked from their work area. Teachers were on fire in professional development, learning to be engaging and robust in the use of virtual tools. And all of this was expected to happen overnight, and it did. It may not have been perfect, but it did and we continue to aspire for perfection. We responded to the needs of our community rather than easy. I did not have to ask our teams to look at how we could do more. Teachers and campus administration and counselors were already collecting data, worrying over students' lack of engagement while under their own roots of family supervision, wondering how to engage more students and specifically looking for ways to stay connected to their students. And just a reminder, the 2020 students they had not even met yet and their passion was to stay connected. Thousands of teacher administrator hours of professional work went into meetings of problem solving in a collaborative manner. All with the knowledge that the most important work was to keep students connected to their high school. We knew that learning would look different. We knew that learning would not be at the same rate, at the same pace as it would pre-COVID. No one group of learners was more important than any other. Yuma Union is about every and right now, every child at home and human being is directly affected by COVID-19. Times of crisis demand cooperation and collaboration from all if, not when. If, communities are to emerge intact. A true leader relies on expertise and respects the professional commitment of those experts who will be doing the work. All the while, being inundated by opinion and noise, but because of the commitment to students and families, our staff took a path of making an incredibly heavy lift trying to meet the needs of the every because our teachers know the every. The goal has always been to return to 100% in-person learning. Nobody more than a teacher knows how important that is. But I strongly speak tonight that that is a county issue, not a Yuma Union High School District issue. It is exhausting to be questioned, criticized and ridiculed by public as professionals because we are doing, well, basically, we never do enough at the right time of the right thing. But we know that we're doing our very best keeping the every in mind. For every call and letter from parents or community wanting full in-person campus, there is an equal number of complaints for any return to campus at all and how could we be so ridiculous? I'd like you to show, to look at some data this evening. For the sake of clarity, let's just make sure that we know the benchmarks. The benchmark information was not made up by Yuma Union High School District. We waited a very long time, all the while preparing for school year 2020, not knowing what the benchmarks would be, but doing our work as we know needed to be done. This benchmark information is posted on the Arizona Department of Education website and is a result of work with the Arizona Department of Health Services. One of the key points of these benchmarks is that there are two components to reopening schools, two components. First is the quality of the school's mitigation plan or the district's mitigation plan. What we will do, how we will do it, how will we keep kids safe, what are our PPE offerings? Done. Yuma Union High School District did that. We met that guideline and it is very clearly posted on our website. What still continues to be ignored by so many is the second piece. Number two is the level of spread occurring within the community. That is not controlled by Yuma Union High School District. Then you can see below that, minimal, moderate, substantial. That is about the spread of COVID-19 in a county or community. In order to, whatever safely means these days, in order to safely open, experts have decided fewer than 10 cases in 100,000, less than 5% positivity, and less than 5% COVID-like illness, that recommended delivery model would be traditional. Moderate is 10 to 100 cases per 100,000, 5 to 10% positivity, 5 to 10% COVID-like illness. That constitutes the guidance of hybrid. Fully virtual would look like 1, over 100 cases per 100,000, over 10% positivity, and over 10% COVID-like illness. The guidance is that two weeks in a row of your dataset would be, you know, depending on where it falls, you would need two weeks in a row to consider moving from one to another as far as the delivery method. I won't read specifically about the second dataset. That's the community's spread levels and schools. But you can see, in order to reopen, using whatever delivery method is appropriate, that schools have a lot of responsibility in many areas to make sure that we can meet in order to constitute any kind of reopening. Our schools are very large, many rooms, many people. And we have all of our mitigation plan as well as our PPE plan and purchases posted. We had two weeks as a county in September when we were very close. As a matter of fact, I was very excited because we were so close to being able to look at potentially coming back to offering in-person learning for students. But behaviors in our county relaxed and the lack of full care and attention to protocols caused a spike in COVID-19 in our county. That is a county issue, an adult issue. Because adult behaviors and modeling, we are closer as a county, and I want to be very clear, we are closer to being back to fully remote learning than we are to full opening. If, and I hope when, we are going to open, we are going to need to work together to slow and stop the spread of COVID-19. And let me further clarify, responsible school districts have strict protocols practiced for health and hygiene. There is a reason our teachers come to work every day and have reported in every day. We have all of the PPE, they know our supplies are there, they have a plan for clean. Yuma Union High School District and our partner districts are part of the slowing of the spread because of all that educators have done for Yuma County, because we love our students and the community in which we live. COVID-19 was not created in a school. COVID-19 is brought into schools because of behavior and decisions outside of school. I'm very happy to have Mr. Brienza come forward and speak with you this evening or speak from where he is. Because Mr. Brienza will get even more specific about the datasets that we're experiencing in Yuma County and his work with, or work with the Yuma County Health Department.
I am Mr. Thompson, Government Board. Over the last month, month and a half, I've had an opportunity to work with different stakeholders in our community. And we would always address the metrics. And this work was done around having spectators at athletic events. So I want to walk you through the metrics that we look at to kind of give you a more of a macro look and then we'll have a micro look at our actual school population of staff and students and the health and safety. So every Thursday at nine o'clock in the morning, but Arizona Department of Health Services, their website, their dashboard for schools have the metrics that come out that Ms. Thompson just gave a overview of. And I think every educator who is near a computer or their phone at nine o'clock is probably looking at it to see where we're at, to see how close we are to having everyone come back to campus or how close we are to remain hybrid. Or if you're virtual, how close we're getting to being in hybrid. So the first slide that Ms. Levis has up there talks about that 100,000, cases per 100,000. And you can see, we kind of have some ups and downs, ups and downs. But we've had a spike here in our community and that would be Yuma County. And we're now at 98 out of 100,000. Unbeknownst to really everyone in the state, on Thursday last week, they changed some of the metrics and the thresholds and I'll go over that. And that wasn't really formally announced until Monday this week. And it's a good thing they changed them and I'll go over that in our next slide. But right now, we're at 98 out of 100,000. So we're hoping that we go down, but as Ms. Thompson had mentioned, it's two weeks being above that threshold that would trigger some sort of action recommendation from the guidance that they're giving us. So on the next slide, that's the percent positivity. This is the one where until last Thursday, the guidance was 7% would keep you in virtual or move you in, I'm sorry, would move you into hybrid learning. So 5 to 7% was going to be hybrid learning. Anything under 5% would be in-person, five days a week theoretically. And anything above 7 would be virtual learning. The state changed the threshold and now it's 5 to 10%. So anything between 5 and 10% would allow us to stay in hybrid learning. And likely for us, it was changed because we have two weeks now where we're above the old threshold of sub-percent, 8.9 to 9.3. So we're still in an environment where hybrid learning is occurring and students are learning. And we did have our executive director facility, Jay Munoz, here a few weeks ago. We gave a report on the PPE and the environment that we're providing to the best of our ability for students and staff to feel safe and come to school and learn. So we feel very comfortable as students on our campus. However, as a community and as a county, we're getting very close to having a tough decision to make. On the third slide, Ms. Levis, thank you. You can see that the hospital visits for COVID-like illness as a community gets very, very low. But as, as many scientists have pointed out, doctors, community members, when the flu season hits, some of those symptoms are very similar to COVID. Not that it is COVID, but they're similar. So this number may go up because of COVID-like symptoms, illnesses. It's not saying that it is COVID, but it may go up a little bit. Hopefully we stay consistent, but this is one area that we've been very low and consistent on. But just like the other two metrics, we're creeping up and getting in a situation as a community and as a county, the spread is there. So if you want to get a micro view on the next slide, this is our staff. So as Ms. Thompson mentioned, COVID is in the community. It's not, it's not created by the schools, could be spread there obviously, but it's not created there. So since we started July 1st through September 13th, 79 of our staff have been exposed to COVID, somewhere, somehow. Since we started hybrid learning, that number is 53. So a total of 132 of our staff have been exposed, which impacts learning by our students because then those individuals have to quarantine, have to self-isolate. And that affects the learning in the classroom. It affects the operations on the campus and the support we give the students and the staff. For being positive, July 1st through September 13th, we had, we had 20 staff members test positive. And when we started hybrid on September 14th, we've had six members from then until now of our staff test positive, so a total of 26. So if you add those two numbers together, that's 158 individuals, no matter what their role is in our district, which is over 10% of our, which is over 10% of our employees have been positive or exposed, which then they had to quarantine and self-isolate, which affects the teaching and learning and operations for our entire district. The last dataset I have is for students. And this is a micro look at the students. And this is, this is provided by the Yuma County Health Service District here in Yuma County. And it may be jumbled a little bit, but we get a list of all the age groups and positive cases. So I took it and broke it out just starting with September 3rd. And then, because that was really the one dataset I want to start with, with our age group of age 13 and it's broken up by 13, 14, 14, 15, so on and so forth, all the way to 18, 19 years old. So the way it reads is if you're, if you're 13, 14 years old in that age group, on September 3rd, 99 individuals of that age in Yuma County were positive. The following week, it was still 99. The following week, it went up to 101. As you progress across, since September 3rd, there's been 10 positive cases for school-aged children, 13 through 14 years old. 14, 15, there's been eight cases. 15, 16, 13 cases. 16, 17-year-olds, there's 21 positive cases in that timeframe, about six to seven weeks. 7 to 18, 10 cases. 18 to 19, 22. So there's been a total of 84 positive COVID cases for school-aged children during that timeframe. Okay? And do all of them go to Yuma High School District? No, but this is just recorded by Yuma County Health Service District of school-aged children. Okay? So that, that's a kind of a micro and a macro look. To talk about how we are able to provide teacher learning for whatever the format is, whether hybrid, virtual, distance, I'd like to have our chief information officer, Evar, come up and maybe share some information.
President Townsend, member of the board, thank you for letting me share some information with you. I want to paint this picture for you really quick about video conferencing or video conference live streaming from the classroom. So if you think about the idea of a traditional teaching approach where your students are showing up and then a remote approach where we're teaching fully online, this is kind of the hybrid approach of those two things. Really what I want to talk about today is what does it take to do this? From a technical standpoint, from my, from my perspective, I'll let the professionals speak to it in the, in the action, in the action part. So there's two major areas that I want to talk about. Number one are technical capacity to do it, both our bandwidth and our equipment. And then just what does it mean when we're doing this, the production scenario, what does it mean to do this? So really quickly, this is some of the work that we've been doing over the last, I don't know, 10 years to get to a point where we have the network capacity to actually do just about anything we want to on our network. Really this, this is just a snapshot of what it means when we say that we have large capacity internet access. And so just to give you some, just some comparisons, if you're rolling around with a Verizon wireless hotspot, you get about 12 megabits per second in terms of internet access. Between District 1 and District 70, we share 40,000 megabits of the internet access. We really don't have a problem with any kind of streaming services or anything of that nature. So from a network standpoint, we're solid. This is probably a really terrible slide. This is probably where our biggest pain happens. This is the lowest common denominator for us. Every one of our teachers gets a laptop computer. And you notice I put personal all over this slide because this is a personal device. Some of the major features that, that attribute or contribute to this hybrid teaching model is, first of all, it's got a tight camera angle. You've all sat down on your personal computer, if you get too far back, you get really small, really fast. It's got a personal microphone, sometimes if you're not close enough to it, people don't hear you on the other end. And then it's got small speakers designed to, to be loud enough for you to be right in front of it. Any, again, you step away from that and really quickly, you're not hearing what's being, what's going on in your computer. So I want to talk a little bit about, this is what I call the ad hoc design. So I'm a teacher, I've got my students in my classroom, they're socially distanced. And now I've got my computer and I'm trying to livestream my classroom from that device that was designed to be a personal machine. Right? My camera may not be in the right angle. I might not, the students might not be able to hear me because I might be, you know, wandering the classroom or intentionally wandering the classroom. And so this creates what I consider a very difficult situation for the teacher who is, who is trying to teach this way, but also for the learners on the other end. My daughters happen to be in a class, in a couple of classes at Sebola and every now and again, she has, they spend a lot of time just trying to get the teacher's attention because they can't hear anymore. And so throw on top of that, the, just the glitchiness of video conferencing. We've all been there where all of a sudden our connection was seems to be really good, is no longer really good, we can't hear, we can't see, or it drops altogether, we're frozen. So this is what's really happening when, when we're asking or when we're, when our teachers are trying to do this. They're trying to be the producer. How do I make sure that what I'm going to do in class today is not only good for the students in class, but for the students remote? They're trying to be the camera tech. How do I make sure I position my camera in just the right angle so that what happens in my lesson today gets captured by, for everybody? Not just those in the classroom, but those remote. They're trying to be the sound tech. Am I loud enough? Am I getting to the speakers on my computer? And least of which is they're trying to be the teacher that day. Right? And I think this is what is interesting to me when our teachers are trying to do this, is that this is all of the roles we're trying to play. Now, we've done some work with AWC in the past. And this is actually one of their room setups. This is how AWC actually does real-world live delivery classroom design. So in their, in a room, similar to this room, you have speakers, ceiling mounted speakers, you'll have a microphone for the teacher, you'll have cameras, and you'll have some displays, just like we do all the way around the room. And then they have one additional thing. They have a production booth where they actually hire one of the students to sit in the classroom to make sure that all of the things that are needing to go online can happen so that the teacher can focus on their primary job, which is teaching. We don't have this in any of our classrooms. We have some valiant attempts right now going on where our teachers are getting really creative and are trying to put together some things so that they can do this really well, or at least attempt to do this really well for their students. And so in summary, just know that with the available equipment that we have right now, video conferencing, the live classroom is going to be difficult and it's going to have some mixed results. Whatever we are putting out right now as a district, that equipment isn't readily designed to do this. And honestly, we commend the teachers who have made this attempt. It's amazing, those who are doing it well, I personally applaud them because they've gone to a lot of effort beyond teaching to actually get this done and get their in-person learners and the remote learners working together. It's amazing what they're doing to get that done. So with that, is there any questions for me?
I have a question.
Yes.
Have we purchased any additional equipment since August to accomplish this in a better fashion?
Specifically, like the remote, in-person, and...
Well, like a laffelayer microphone that the teacher can have.
No, I mean, there's been instances of purchases for different things, but by and large for the district, there is not.
Why?
It's very expensive. That's the primary, that's the primary reason. In fact, we had looked at it. We demoed some equipment to do this, to try to do this well as best we can. And it would have been about a million and a half dollars to try to outfit classrooms, not even all classrooms, just like 40 classrooms on each campus. It's very expensive to do it.
My follow-up question to that would be, if teachers are staying in their bubble that we've provided, I would think that losing them and the camera would go away because they're not moving. They're staying right there. Am I incorrect?
I'm going to let those who are doing it answer that question if that's okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
President Townsend, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I have the honor of being serving as the Chief Academic Officer. And tonight, I have a couple of things for you to kind of be informative regarding to. First and foremost, one of the things we've been doing as in our various meetings and in regards to our leadership and things like that, is we've been talking a lot about what we wish. And the rule about that is when we do it, we say things that could physically happen if we have the time and the effort to do it. So for example, one wish is, I wish parents, and these are things that are said by teachers in meetings, I wish parents would understand that learning happens not necessarily only when a student is standing in front of you. That's something that could strategically be done because today is October 27th. I can call a parent meeting on November 15th. I can explain to parents what learning looks like. I can take them to a trajectory that can be understood. And so that's something that's possible. Other things that are said are, I wish people would understand, you hear people say a lot nowadays that teachers have so much more free time. I wish people would understand that we really don't have more free time. That prior to COVID, the system that we've been in for 100 years, which all of us have been through school, who had played school when we were children, now as a teacher, I kind of have an idea what to do. But now all of a sudden, since March, this is a whole new world. And so I need to talk to other people about it. I need to figure out how to make sure, not only do I get through today, but how to get through the next day. So some of the time that you graciously granted us in the afternoon to accomplish those things, that's where that's being done. And so that's another wish a teacher had. The last one was, this is probably one that I was pointing. A teacher said, "I wish I could see the students who I haven't met yet." It is October 27th. We've been in school since August 6th. There are teachers who are responsible for the learning of students who they've never physically had contact with. We all know that the importance of teaching and the teachers' relationship really comes from the interaction between teacher and student. So if I don't even know what you look like, it's really hard for me to help you and to accommodate your learning. But our teachers are doing phenomenal jobs, even with all those barriers in place. So tonight, we're going to take it from a real, this is a little fun thing. And we're going to start from a real comprehensive level. We have all six principals who are going to come and share some information. And we have some very specific teachers who are going to share some of the things that they're doing in their classroom. And those teachers who are sharing things, we have three teachers who are sharing things. Those three teachers are emblematic of all the wonderful teachers that we have who are doing great things. And then we have some folks who are going to answer some of your questions regarding to what you see. So we're going to hear from the principals. Each of them, or six of them, have been given a little time limit to really share some wonderful information for you regarding all the things that are going on in our building. So with that being said, please begin your fourth principal.
First one doesn't have a time limit.
President Townsend, board members, Superintendent Thompson, superintendents. Thank you for having us here this afternoon. As my name is lucky ever you saw, I'm the principal of San Luis High School. And as the principals come up here, just keep in mind that each high school also has its own community. So data may be a little different. And I'm going to talk about, obviously, our community in San Luis and San Luis High School. So just to give you a little idea regarding the amount of students that we have coming on campus, we have a total of about 700 students that come to campus on a weekly basis at San Luis High School. So what that means is we'll get about 350 students Monday, Tuesday, and then a new amount of students, 350 Thursday, Friday. So just with the numbers, that gives us about 2,000 students that are 100% distance learning in our campus. Okay? So you may want to ask the question, why? A couple of top reasons is our feeder schools are 100% distance learning at this point in time. And our high school students have to stay home to take care of their little brothers and sisters while mom and dad go to work. One of the other reasons is we have a community that has multi-generational homes. Meaning that the grandchildren to the grandparents and anybody in between are in the same home. We actually have great-grandparents. So a lot of families think of that as a risk for the older generation as far as COVID is concerned. So at San Luis High School, we've made some adjustments because the original hybrid model allowed for 100% distance learning on Wednesdays for those students. Monday and Tuesday, we refer in-person. Thursday, Friday, we refer in-person. Even on the afternoons, we did have time for those distance learning students. But what ended up doing, and this was more teacher-driven than anything else, they went ahead and actually had distance learning available to go live with every student every day. So not only Wednesdays, but Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, those distance learning students could check in live with those students during the actual in-person time. Also, those students that came in person Monday, Tuesday, they can also come in live Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Again, so students could check in on a daily basis. Because we had such a big amount of students, a large population of students that were 100% distance learning. So just to give you an idea, we have about 88% of our teachers that have transitioned to that. We still have some that are working. Is it easy? Absolutely not. Mr. Farrar just kind of explained as far as being the producer and everything. But we have awesome teachers that are doing awesome jobs and are doing it because it's the right thing to do for those students. They've also done a great job. I don't know, the teachers, counselors, staff members are making phone calls to parents to keep them up on their grades, keep them up on making sure that they hand in the work. And just to give you an idea of our community, at the beginning of school, we had about 8% of our families use parenting. So in those phone calls, we are really suggesting, hey, you decided for parenting, you can keep track of your students' grades. So we really focus on that October in our phone calls to really let them know that they need to get involved in therapy so we can get that percentage up, so they can actually see it on a daily basis. But our teachers are doing an awesome job. And hats off to them because, you know, those stories as far as teachers aren't working are, they're working two, three times as much in hours and getting everything prepared. Believe me, we would all love to come back, you know, 100%. But, you know, obviously, we have to, as Mr. Ramsey said, we have to look at the metrics and look at the situation. But I think my time is up. I can keep talking, but thank you very much.
First of all, thank you, President Townsend, board. Mr. Thompson, we appreciate getting some time. I'm going to have to hold this, aren't I? That takes me further away. I hope I can still read what I'm talking about. I just wanted to kind of follow up on something that Superintendent Thompson talked about. And where we've come from March 13th to now and how the teachers have come together and worked hard in collaboration. I have two teachers that are on my staff in the room today. But it's happened because everybody is collaborative. We're working with other schools. We're stealing ideas. We're finding out what works and everybody's trying it. That doesn't happen unless people want to. It's either sink or swim when you're in the middle of something like this and everybody's coming together. So that is part of what the board has created and everybody else to allow us to work that hard and get to where we're at. So we appreciate that. I'm going to give you a little snapshot, some of our data, just real quick. We still have about 2,100 students that are actively on our rosters. We thought we would drop a little. We're built for 1,850. We knew we were going to be high this year, thought we would lose some, but they're staying strong. So things are going well. Out of that number, we have 1,548 students that have COVID waivers. And I flagged that out because it's a little bit higher than the ones that are actually coming to school in hybrid. In our hybrid classes, we have about 1,400 students that are showing up. With that, it's a little skewed. A few more students on our Monday, Tuesday, and a little less students on our Thursday, Friday. But it's coming about, the most we've had show up at one time in a week is that 1,400. We are finding out right now, it's kind of moving back and forth. Kids are moving from hybrid and distance learning, and it's going both ways. Some are deciding to come in and now try hybrid. Others, for whatever reason, somebody that's sick, whatever, they're going to distance learning, but they're trying to keep up. So those for us are, you know, a few of our important numbers. And then we have distance only, anywhere from 580 to about 700 students that we have, that are staying strictly with the distance learning. So parts of that and what we're looking at, we have seen the movement back and forth there in more in the last couple of weeks for some reason. And I know numbers go up, so people correlated with that, but I don't know that that's the case. If it's COVID numbers or just things going on. It's that time of year where we have a little dip in morale and things like that. They might just be taking time off. We don't know that for sure. But a few of the things, just kind of next step or even continuous steps, as we get to the end of this first grading period, we have seven weeks in now with our hybrid. We're about to get a good set of data that we can look at and see where we're at. Through the first grading period, all distance learning, we know we're lower than we want to be with our credit current kids. That's something that we look at. We have to get a grip on that. And now we see after seven weeks of hybrid, has that helped us? And we're going to be a little better off in that. And if not, we're going to have to go and do a root cause analysis, buy out the anomalies. We've got to figure out what we can do to tweak, again, the system we're doing and try to make it better for our students. So a lot of the things we're doing and the PD we're providing, one thing I'll talk to a little bit just quick is, Dean was talking about trying to do the streaming with the kids outside the classroom. We have about 25% of our teachers that have a pretty good grip on that. And they're doing a good job. We have probably another 20% that tried it. And it's just difficult to do unless you have extra equipment. Some of our teachers have got their own or just had their own. But there's also been some of them that's purchased to try it. So it's working well. So that's part of the PD we're working on also. Trying to get some of that going to make it a little more conducive to have students watching from camera and being in the class. But it is a difficult thing, as everybody kind of described. We appreciate everything. We will continue to utilize our committees and problem shoot. And we're going to continue to try to get better at what we do as we go through the next six weeks before we finish the semester. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
President Townsend, Mr. Thompson, everybody, board. Thanks for letting us all be here today to share a little bit. And like, let people stay in, our schools are very, very different in culture and climate. And so some key takeaways from COVID high school is that, first of all, you know, stress is real and it's affecting everybody. It's affecting everybody differently. Staff are showing up and working very, very hard. We have heard, oh, they're, they're, they have some more time off and so on and so. But I can tell you, it's almost a day-to-day occurrence. So I have a conversation with the teacher. It just feels like I can't unplug, you know? It feels like I can't be waved. So it's very difficult. Change is constant, like you've heard from everybody else. And remaining cognizant of social and emotional needs of everyone is paramount. We have to, we have to keep that in mind. Some of our data coming from COFA. We have an average attendance rate in-person of 500 kids per day. So, you know, 500 come for the Monday, Tuesday, and 500 come on the Thursday, Friday. That's about 24% of our population. We're still around 20, 25 or 6 is the last time I looked. Our average class size is around seven students, is average class in-person. Our students that live, or teachers that livestream, we have 58% are livestreaming while they're doing their in-person learning. And so some are much, much better than others at it, but it's not for that. I'm trying, I'll tell you that. Our campus logging rates are good. I mean, students are logging in. It's over, it's low 90s to mid-90s consistently. So we're getting them there. But the problem is, is that, like Mr. Ware alluded to, is that the getting the work turned in. So we're looking at something that I've never seen as long as I've been principal of COFA. We're looking at like 40% of our students have, you know, one or more failing grades. So that's alarming for us. But we continue to have this attitude that, as a campus, that this can be better. Let's keep trying. And what can we do about it? You know, it's not, we're not placing blame on the kids. We're not placing blame on parents. But it's like, what can we do as a profession? So over the past couple of weeks, we've made some, we've made some changes on campus in response to this data that we've seen. And we started to focus more, and then the teachers will get to this, but started to focus more on assignments versus assessments and what that means. We started focusing on, we did, two weeks ago, we made a push to have every staff member of COFA have the same homepage for their campsites with the thought that that's going to make it easier. Once the kids get there, it's how frustrating is it to have to figure out where to click? You know, it's just like, okay, forget it, I'm out. But if we can make it consistent for them, then we thought that would make an impact. We're consistently doing peer observations and talking to teachers about how Canvas works. We're consistently doing peer observations and talking to teachers about how Canvas works and having teachers talk to teachers on what's working in our classroom. Part of the biggest thing that we've done so far is we've dissected how we're communicating with parents because it's, it's important that the parents know what's going on within the classroom. So there are multiple ways that we communicate with parents, but are they really getting the message that we need them to get? So we conducted a survey a couple of weeks ago. We had 192 responses, that was fantastic for us. We asked them questions about how, how do they want to get communication from us? How are we doing as far as communication's going from the school? 85% said we're either doing well or excellent. So from those 192 that responded, we asked them like, what is the best way for them to provide input to the school? And then this current time, a survey would be the best way for them to provide input. We are starting weekly progress reports real soon, within the next week, to be able to send them home on ParentView to, to the parents so that they know exactly where their kids are weekly. We had our first parent engagement night last Thursday night, October 22nd. We did it on WebEx, wasn't perfect, but it was good. We had 50 something, well, 52 people show up. About 35 of whom were there at the very end for the whole question answer session that I took part in, which was kind of fun. But probably the best thing, but the most important thing is that the staff is still, still there, they wanna learn. We are providing personalized professional development for them consistently. I mean, just this afternoon, we offered, at Kofa, we offered six different sessions on engagement strategies that the teachers taught. They talked to other, other teachers and they had a choice on which one they wanted to go to and so on. Those are the campus support sessions, hybrid environment sessions and so on. So the collaboration that Mr. Ware spoke about, it is real, it's real. One thing that has come good under this is it's been that, there's much, much more collaboration between teachers. So just those, those key reminders again, that we just keep coming back to is that the stress is real and it's affecting everybody differently. Staff are showing up daily, the nerve work is hard. Change is consistent. And then just remaining cognizant of the whole social, emotional piece.
President Townsend, Governing Board, good evening. Brett Sargen, I'm the principal at Vista High School. And I think I wanna start off by, by just giving a piece of data that I think is a testament to the incredible work that teachers are doing in developing online instruction. And this is something that I have, that, so Vista finished a semester essentially a couple of weeks ago on October 7th. So we already have data about how many students finished classes and passed their classes. And we looked at what, how the students were engaging. Were they coming in person? Were they joining on camera on Wednesdays and otherwise doing distance learning? Or were they doing neither of those? They were somehow participating in their Canvas courses, but they weren't interacting with teacher. And when we looked at students who didn't come to school in person, but they joined on camera on Wednesdays, they actually earned more credits, a little bit more than students who came in person. And I think that's a testament to the level of instruction that teachers have developed and put onto Canvas so that students who don't feel safe and comfortable being at school at Vista or at other schools in the district can still get the same high level of instruction, the same assessments, and make progress towards, towards graduation. So in terms of how many students we have attending in various ways, right now, we have 141 students out of 252, so about 56% of our current students who have attended in person at some, at some point. And just like at the other schools, it shifts back and forth. They'll, they'll come to school one week and then they'll choose to be distance learning the week after that. And class sizes, we've had anywhere from one to 11 students in a classroom at any time, but typically it's three to seven students in a classroom. I knew going into the term, going into the school year, when we struggled to get parents and students to come in to, to say that they're living at the same address, to pick up their Chromebook for the school year, to do those basic registration processes, that we would really struggle to engage parents and engage students this year. And that continues to be a challenge for Vista. And one of the unique things that we've been able to do is we've had 100, over 160 home visits this school year. And that includes every kind of staff imaginable. I have two CTE teachers right now who are doing home visits currently, sitting down with parents, asking their, those parents what their hopes and dreams are for their children. But we've done lots of different kinds of home visits and we've had over 25 staff members go, security nurse, 19 teachers, counselor, drop off prevention specialists. So we're all in trying to engage those students, trying to connect with them. And we will continue to do that work because it, we're seeing some, some outcomes and some results from that. This year, we have that data about how many students finished their classes and passed and it's, it's better than I thought it was going to be, which is really hopeful. So last year in our first term, which is essentially August through October, 68% of our students who were in a teacher-led class, they got a passing grade in that class. This year from August to October went down, went down to 50%. But our students are still making progress towards graduation, they're finishing classes, they're, they're making progress. And again, when we see the students who come to school in person, they pass their classes. When we see the students who join on camera, they pass their classes as well. Right now at Vista, it's the students who are not doing either of those at all or all of those consistently. Those students are not, are not making progress. Those, those are the students we're, we're trying to appeal to more, show that there's value in joining the camera sessions and show that there's value in showing up and interacting with the teacher. So that's the data for Vista High School. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Good evening, President Townsend, members of the Board, Superintendent Thompson, Derek Bosch, Principal, Sebola High School. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, good. So now I wanna talk about three things. Attendance, communication and celebrations. And I'll start with celebrations. I just had a faculty meeting before coming up here tonight at the end of the school day and there were so many to go through with our staff and it felt like I was rambling on and off, so I'm gonna try to be quick. One, we're still at school. That is something to celebrate. Our athletics and our activities are going strong, we're starting our clubs after school. So we're, we're doing what we wanna do. Our health and safety protocols at Sebola specifically have been fantastic. Kids are not, not wanting to wear their masks. PPE is in every classroom. The nurse is doing an amazing job messaging when there's reports of sickness, all those things. So health and safety right now, in my opinion, are top notch. Our student council is doing everything they can to make school normal. They're having spirit days. We're playing music on the inner town. We're, we're trying to get people to enjoy being back in school because it's obviously different. I wanna celebrate our leadership team. We have 19 members of our, our leadership team that we, we collaborate so much together and that trickles down to the departments. And I feel like right now, that's, that's really helping with our communication on our campus in general because we want teachers, for as hard as they work and as much as they put into this, we want them to own what they do in their classroom and we want them to be part of the decision-making at Sebola. And we're, we're doing a lot to make that happen. We had 387 students that came to take the ACT test on October 20th, 387 seniors, more than I expected, to be honest with you. We have every teacher on campus, working on campus. We have zero teachers right now working from home, which that's hard to imagine right now, but they're all on campus and they're all working from their classrooms. So that is definitely something to celebrate. Communication, I wanted to say real quick, we've been making a valiant effort to communicate with our students, our staff and our parents. Most recently, we looked at data regarding grades and attendance. We realized, like the other principals mentioned, many of them, our failure rates are high. Our attendance has taken a dip since the start of hybrid. So what we did is we took the whole month of October, we canceled all of our PDs, our professional developments on Wednesday, and we said, teachers, you're gonna call every student in your third period class. We're gonna give you the data of how they're doing in every one of their classes, attendance, grades, and you're going to call them, reach out to them, and you're gonna give them a snapshot of how they're doing. Now, we didn't just call the kids that are struggling academically, we called every single one of them. Some of the feedback that I heard from the teachers after the first round of calling was, we've already seen a lot of changes in assignment submissions. Parents were wanting to learn more. For example, how do I get ParentView? We had over 800 parents that did not have ParentView access. So our teachers communicated with the parents as they called them, this is what you do to get ParentView. So overall, those interactions were very positive. Today, we completed our fourth day, our fourth Wednesday of making those calls. Now, did we get ahold of everybody? No, but we made an effort to call every, every parent at that time. Students, I'll end with this, we've surveyed students. What do you, how is Canvas working for you? What would you like to see more to help you learn more? And they gave us the results. 60% of our students said they would like a unified Canvas course. They have six classes and if you've ever taken an online class, I've taken three of them at once, it's not six. It was three and it was hard. Our students are essentially taking six classes, some of them all online. And that's, and that's very difficult for them. So today, as a faculty, we reviewed the student data, what do our students want? We even had a student come in and speak to our leadership team about what he is seeing, all the things. So we're, we're addressing those things right now at the campus and if you have specific questions to that after, I'd be happy to answer what our next steps are with that. And I'll close with this, our attendance, this is kind of where we're at, these are things we looked at as a leadership team. The week of September 14th, when we started hybrid learning, we had a total average attendance, I'm sorry, of 1921. And most recently, that, last week, that went down a little over 300. So we've seen a dip in attendance. Now, some kids might just not be taking attendance, which we've, which we've learned. They're struggling to get in and take attendance in all of their classes. But we've seen a little bit of a dip, but we've had, our in-person attendance is close to 500. Actually, I take that back. Our in-person attendance is, on average, two days is 500 a week. Total attendance right now, last week, was 1531 between in-person and distance learning. So we're seeing pretty good attendance, but part of our goal in calling our parents is to see how we can improve that, how we can improve grades, assignment submission and overall attendance. Thank you. I talk with my hands a lot.
I'm gonna pause everybody else. President Townsend, Governing Board, Mrs. Thompson. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, I really appreciate it. I'm gonna start off with some highlights, I'm gonna dig into the data a little bit, then we'll have some more highlights. We've got a lot of successes at UMA High School. Parent communication, just as the other principal has said, has been a focus for us as being a school year. Us, just like Sebola has, we've set aside some Wednesdays to really focus on communication. We've worked on communicating to third period parents and guardians during those Wednesdays. It's been a big success for us. Our teachers have been getting ahold of parents, calling different times of the day, the afternoon, during the hour of calling has been successful. It doesn't take away from calling parents like we normally would, we still wanna reach out to all of our parents. We expect our teachers to make those calls throughout, throughout the semester. We're emphasizing the use of ParentView as the other schools are. ParentView is a great resource for parents who can check attendance, see their grades. We set up supports for our teachers. If you don't speak Spanish, they're able to call home. We have secretaries, other personnel that are helping and supporting our teachers. That don't speak Spanish, they're able to call if they need those supports. It's really important for us to reach our entire community at our school. I'd like to highlight our English department. Almost the entire department has over 200 documented contacts to our parents and guardians. They've done a great job, they document on contact log to, just so we have that document so we know exactly what's going on, who's been contacted, who hasn't. Our drop-off prevention specialist has made almost 100 home visits and we're utilizing our door hanging, which we started using this year. So if someone's at home, they have our number, they can call us, they know that we're there. Says, sir, we missed you, we stopped, I am here with you about your child. So they know that we care and that their students are very important to us. Professional development has been teacher-centered. Teachers completed a Google needs assessment behavior. So our teaching and learning team, we've created our instructional coaching teaching and learning coordinator and developed specific professional development for our teachers. Some need work with Canvas, some need help with SCI supports. Each teacher is different, with their own career, so it's important to support all of our teachers. Our data, our school at UMA High, we're a little smaller, so keep that in mind. We have, what, 1,150 students at UMA High School. Right now, we have 715 COVID waivers on file. For the entire week, in-person learning, we are around 360 students are still coming on campus. So it's actually really close to 180 on Monday, Tuesday, and really close to 180 Thursday, Friday, every time I pulled it. That gives us an average class size of four or five students. Sometimes we'll go in and you'll see two or three students, sometimes you'll see 10, but around four to five students. We had the ACT, just like all the other schools, we had 139 seniors show up for the ACT. We actually received 36 waivers that day, so 36 students that hadn't been coming out of campus, they brought their waivers. We were really excited that they showed up and were able to take part in the test, so that was a great opportunity for those students. One of our, one of our big goals with, with this current environment is to involve our students in as much of a normal situation as we can. So our activities principal, Kathy Hoover, has been working really hard with the activities department, club sponsors, students that are involved in activities. We actually have 13 clubs activated right now, we typically have about 17, which is really getting close to getting all of those clubs activated. Our goal is to get them all activated, so their students have as much of a normal, positive experience that they can than given the environment that we're in. We actually had homecoming last week and we actually crowded, gave them a clean, we did a Google survey. Students were able to answer through Canvas, they had a virtual ceremony. And we did the Kofa, which was, which was excellent. It's okay, Mr. Sherwood, sorry about that. Our counselors are doing a great job reaching, reaching all of our students, promoting college and career readiness. It's obviously a goal across, across our entire district. We had a recent survey that our counselors put out, 87% of our seniors plan to attend college and the 13, remain 13% plan to enter the military to try to pull up a time job. Our counselors, tomorrow, we're actually having the drive-through graduation and beyond event. Where our seniors that come through, they're actually gonna get a visit paid and lots of goodies inside, FAFSA information, we have a gear up startup guide. Basically explains the whole process of getting to college, doing the FAFSA, what you need to do, who you need to talk to, applications and so on. So they're gonna get that, seniors when they come through, we're obviously willing to accept that, they'll get to the future as well. So our counselors are very proud of that, they've been working really hard to keep that college-going culture within our school. So we're extremely proud of all those things that are going on at UMA High School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, I really appreciate it. Everyone have a great event.
Thank you.
Okay, so that is the first part, the top part of our funnel. So the next two people you're going to hear from are three of our teachers. There are three teachers from three different schools and I will, at this point, I will introduce them and tell you who they are and then they will each come up and speak. First of all, we have Ian Coleman, he's an instructional leader in science from Kofa High School. He teaches among many things, physics. We also have Ms. Tiffany Minnick, she's from Keeler Ridge High School, she teaches dance. Then we have Mr. Sean Jones, who's from UMA High School, who teaches English. So the three of them are gonna come forward. Again, they're gonna come forward, they're representative and they're emblematic of all teachers who are doing wonderful and amazing things. And afterwards, we'll be able to ask questions to our teacher who's been working with us a long time throughout this process.
President Thompson, Governing Board, Mr. Thompson. Thank you for having me tonight. I was asked to come here to represent teachers and talk about the Canvas learning program that I specifically am using and all of our teachers are using. Canvas has really become the tool of choice for teachers during this hybrid learning moment because we realize that as hard as we try, we will not see all of our students in a given week, which means our students need to be able to learn in our absence. So the way that myself and other teachers that I've talked to have approached this is that we are setting up our entire lesson planning under the assumption that we will have students that don't receive any face-to-face time with teachers.
under the assumption that we will have students that don't receive any face-to-face time with teachers, but it is still our job to make sure that they learn. So what that process looks like at Kofa High School, where I teach, is all teachers have a unified Canvas page. All of our Canvas pages have the same elements, um, on the front end, which means that our students, as soon as they step into their class, immediately know where to go. And so they have a schedule, goes Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. They can figure out what cohort they're in, A through L, M through Z, or online only. And within one click of entering my course, they can find immediately the assignments that I've given them for that day. I spend a lot of time recording lessons. Um, I was, in fact, I was on campus this weekend getting lessons recorded for the upcoming weeks. So, and looking at assignments with the goal that a student should be able to step into that classroom virtually and still get the same quality education that they've been getting, even if they were in person. So, that's been kind of the thought process. As Mr. Sharp alluded to, all of our stu-, or the large majority of our students are logging into campus, but the trick has been getting them to turn in assignments. And so troubleshooting and removing, uh, removing excuses, I think would be the best way of doing it. And thinking about how can we get students to turn things in? So we've done things such as simplifying how many assignments we give per week. Uh, some teachers start at the year, uh, with, you know, maybe a different assignment per day, and we've been really reaching for mastery. And instead of looking at, okay, if I was to have one assignment that I could use to determine whether you really understand the skill that I'm teaching or not, what would that assignment look like? And so getting the assignment numbers down has helped my students specifically. I notice my turn-in rates have increased since we've started working with that. And then working with the unified Canvas page has also been really, really helpful. So I think our teachers have a lot of the tools, and I know I myself have been trying to use as many of our tools as possible so that our students can learn regardless of what mode they're in. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
President Thompson, Superintendent Thompson, Governing Board, thank you for having me. Can you hear me okay? All right, good. I got a little extra thing from here. Um, I am actually a first-year teacher. My name is Tiffany Minnick. As I said, I was at Hela Ridge High School, I'm a dance teacher. I am probably here to kind of represent the fact that being a new teacher, first year, and this is not my norm, that I can be the one to say that these teachers are working like no other. I, also a parent of a senior at the high school, I did not realize really how much these teachers actually do. I probably at one point would have been one of the ones that said, "Oh, they have all this time off." I would love to have the summer off. I don't think they actually have any time off. To be honest with you, what's going on, uh, especially with COVID, and I think even before COVID, these teachers are doing an awesome job. Um, we do collaborate, so we do have our lunch hour, we've got a thirty-minute, a thirty-minute lunch hour. And during that time, we collaborate. We come in and we talk to each other because we've gotten off of our Canvas. Uh, if we're talking, we want to be able to, um, have someone else to talk to and say, "Are we doing this right?" And these teachers, um, they're amazing, they really are amazing. Um, I have done some of the tools, and I am basically learning as I'm going, um, being that first-year teacher. We are having kids that, I see them come in on campus, I see them in person. Um, it's great to see them, I can tell they're excited to be here. But, um, again, we are having difficulty getting them to turn in assignments. And I'm, as a new teacher, I'm struggling to see, "How do I get them to do this?" So we have spent a week, um, roughly about, probably about two weeks now, trying to make sure that all of these assignments get in because dance is really a physical instruction. And I think that adds to it, um, trying to get the kids to understand. So, um, they love being in school, they love the idea of school, they love being with their friends. Um, it's just, I think, trying to get them to turn in assignments, and how can I help them as a new teacher? And with the older teachers to try to figure out, "How do we get this taken care of?" And, um, it, I just, I guess I just want to say that the teachers are doing an amazing job. And as a parent, and as an older, newer teacher, I feel for them. So, thank you, and thank you for the job. I'm glad we found a real, a solid job. Thank you so much.
Uh, Mr. Thompson, uh, Superintendent Ms. Thompson, members of the board, this is a big. My name is Sean Jones, I'm at Uma High, I'm a freshman English teacher. My first year at Uma High teaching, but I've been teaching at Southern Central School before that. Um, I'm here today to speak on the teachers as far as the grading goes and the turnover that I've had from when we went to all online till we went to the hybrid one. So with that being said, to caveat off my colleague, a lot of my grading is standard-based grading with the objective. So I don't overload the students with a lot of tasks or assessments. So the model, no student left behind, or no kid left behind, I picked that up, there's no assignment left behind. So that means that, um, if a student has a science or history project, and I would utilize that and put my standard or my objective that's needed, to caveat off of that, and have them use that assignment also. So I've seen with using that model, the interaction between and the success rate of them turning in the work is, um, communicating first of all with Mr. Jones. They email me, we talk about it, and also use that as creative content. Probably for main idea, if I'm looking for certain things, or examples, or details, um, as they submit the work. So everything the student does, I use that for my grading and my communication pieces as far as an English teacher goes, which has assisted me in keeping the students at a high rate and, um, having none of my students, as far as grade-wise, with a failing grade. Which is also gave the peer-to-peer collaboration, that they speak to other students, and those students will communicate with me to get work turned in, so that learning is occurring at all stages. So I just wanted to be up here to add that piece to it, and, uh, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
All right, really wonderful piece of the funnel. Last piece of the funnel is going to be six teachers who we probably talked to you about before. Since our COVID journey in March, we have chosen one teacher for each building. The characteristics of this teacher is, it's a teacher who we know is an influencer. It's a teacher who we know that the people in their building, teachers, students, admin, all respect and trust. And a teacher who we know is going to spend time with us looking at things not only through a teacher lens, but through the lens of leadership, so that they can help us make the decisions that we make. And so, from a teaching and learning team perspective, as we went from distance learning to hybrid, as we went from prior to distance learning to our distance learning platform, they've really worked with us in terms of creating and helping us with the logistics as far as saying, "Okay, here's what a standard day is going to look like. Here's, here's some of the things that we're going to do. Here's why this is important, here's why that's important." Those sorts of things. So those six teachers are, we'll be Hannah Cole from Sebola, Trish Ellsworth from Hela Ridge, Norm Champagne from Kofa High School, Diego Moya from Vista High School, Tim Rebeck from San Luis High School, and Ernest Rovell from, um, Uma High School. So I'm going to bring three of them up forward, so that way, any questions that you glean throughout the course of the evening, you're more than happy to, you're more than welcome to ask them the question, and they can answer from this platform. Okay? So, we need more.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen, are there questions that we can ask you? Concerns that you have?
So many.
So many.
So many questions. Um, I want to genuinely, and I think everybody else in this room will too, just applaud every teacher. I thank you so much. I'm so grateful for every single one of you. Um, teaching is calling, and, very often. And we know, uh, that you want to be with your kids, we know that. I feel like the job that has been accomplished since going hybrid specifically has been double and triple the work. Just in preparing your classes and your lectures online, like that one gentleman said. Or making a Google Doc so that kids can turn in their stuff. It's, it's so, so impressive. Uh, my first question would be, what's going on with mandated assessments? Are they being mandated by the principals, by the district, by the state? Or are you given much more freedom within your classroom to assess as you see fit?
Um, I would say that we, that we have a significant amount of freedom on how we assess. Um, there is a movement, a push to move away from the old style of assessment to move to a more project-based and reaching a standard assessment, which is, can display their learning, display their understanding of the standard in various ways. There is a, a lot of work done by teachers to provide choice. Choice on what the assessment looks like, choice in how they, um, turn it in to us when there's like a video, or they've created Google slide, or all those kinds of things. So, um, I believe, I believe I have a pretty decent amount of freedom in how I choose to assess my students. Um, I think there could be more training on helping teachers understand project-based assessment and the value in it, because we've done something for so long, and so that's, you know, the way it should be. But, um, we're finding out that kids who create, learn more, and retain more. And project-based assessments provide that for us. And so receiving even more training on that could go a long way in helping us in a scenario like this. Project-based can also be student-driven on how much time they have to work on it. Um, and it may take one student a quick amount of time to get that project and show it down, get it down, or another student might take some time. And we're working as teachers to make sure that that deadline meets the student, and not what I think we should.
Thank you.
I do want to add the fact that even though we are, every teacher wants to make sure that every student is successful, we need to increase that student choice. So most of the, the PLCs, most of the, the groups, um, of teachers who are working together, all of them work closely together to try to get a snapshot of what our students are doing well and how we can help those who aren't. So it, it looks different from every teacher to another teacher because it's so personalized with the students that we have in class. So my third-period class is a group of high achievers, whereas my fifth-period class is, needs a little bit more help. So we work together to try to create choices for all of our students so that all of them can, and can prove that they are successful. And that might be, you know, drastically different from one student to another.
Good evening. I, I'd say that as, as we move forward, as we've been even before this, we're addressing our assessments under standards. So does this assessment, does the standard, what standard, what do we want the student to know? How do we know when they know it, and then we move on? If they didn't get it, how would, how would we regret? If they didn't do it, what would we move on? And Mr. Coleman addressed that when he was saying, you know, are there a lot of just busy work? Is there no age, or are we addressing the standard? And I think we're focusing hard on standards across the district.
Thank you. How, how does group projects look right now? How does that, how does that look?
Tricky. Um, okay, so for example, I co-teach a class called Early Childhood Education. Um, it is a CTE course. We usually are, have the opportunity to run a daycare, a child, like a preschool. And so we, we've got a little box, since we have three, four-year-old kids come on campus, and our kids teach those kids, and they learn those skills and things like that. Well, that's not happening. That's our lab, and our students in CTE are required to do fifty-one percent of their work in a lab. So we have been created, and so we are now running a virtual preschool. And so our students are placed into groups, and they're working and collaborating together both, um, when they come in person, and we try to keep those kids that are in-person together in groups, and those kids that are distance learners in groups, so that they have the opportunities to work together. And those groups are creating an entire week of lessons for the preschool. And, and they're, you know, they're, uh, creating videos of them reading books, and they're creating videos of them creating art crafts. Um, and it's been a challenge for those students to figure out how to work together. Um, but with constant nights and, um, phone contact from us, um, they're getting there. Our, our students are getting there. Is it easy? No, they are. It, it is not easy. But our students are learning and are growing. Are growing, Paige. And, and we're pushing through them, we're finding ways to do it, but our kids are creating things they've never done before. Works out, not only could you say you work at a preschool, you created a virtual preschool. And so, um, our kids are kind of embracing that as like, "Wow, this is impressive." Wow, you know? So there's parts of that that come in. There's still many blocks, but we are trying to find ways in which our kids will collaborate, because it's so important.
Thank you.
Within Canvas itself, Canvas has a collaborative nature to it. So as an English teacher, um, I can use a Google Doc and assign students to that Google Doc when they have to collaborate digitally with that Google Doc. They are all working together on the same document, creating something on that same document. So I can assign both students in-person with those who are digital, and they can work together. So like Trish said, there are, there are a lot of stumbling blocks, and there are a lot of trials and error that we have to go through. But every single teacher is working through that because we understand that collaboration with teachers is extremely important. And students working together is also extremely important. It's a skill that they have to master in order to be productive members of our society. So we can't let that step go. It's just trying to figure out how it works. The logistics of it is, is the trial and error part.
Thank you.
Same.
Okay, so lastly, and I, I really would love to hear from all three of you on this. Um, do you feel safe in school? And if so, why? And if not, why not?
Yeah, I think so.
I'm still here. Yes, I absolutely feel safe. Protocols are good on campus. On our campus, we have walk-in-a-room, uh, there's a sign on the door, the room's in service, the room is not in service. Um, an IL, it says an IL. If I get a teacher call, she says, "Ride hand cleaner." I put it in the form, literally, literally, that period, they've got hand cleaner on site. Um, messaging is good from, from the nurse's office on down. Um, we not have a lot of problems, I don't know if we've had any problems. I know we've had some teachers get letters, who maybe have been in contact. I've had teachers who've had COVID in the summer, um, they're on-site, they're comfortable. I have no teacher telling me they're concerned being on-site at this time.
Thank you.
Um, uh, I am, I am the same way. I feel pretty strong about the protocols that exist. I know, uh, before coming into this, when you were talking about bringing the kids on campus, one of the common things I was sort of like, "How are you going to get those kids keeping their masks on?" There's no way. They do it. They do it, they don't question. I have not, in this entire time, had to tell a kid to put the mask back on, ever. And when I walk down Bree's Way, or, you know, down Bree's, and then outside, the kids are wearing them outside. The kids are wearing them in the hall. They're not, they're, they're doing their part, which I'm super proud of them because they respect each other, they respect us as teachers, and the safety that's required to keep this all going, they understand that. That, that, that they're part of the equation. So as far as safety, I feel pretty good.
Thank you.
I, I personally feel very safe, um, as Mr. Bosch was talking about. The fact that Sebola really does a very good job at messaging. We have every PPE that we need. Um, if we need something, just like Norm said, it's there for us. All we have to do is message and get it. Um, but just like Mr. Sharp said, there, the social-emotional part of teaching is just that. It is very emotional for some of our teachers. And so those teachers who have students, or, not students, but those teachers who have children who are immunodepressed, uh, we have a librarian who is immunodepressed, we have very, a lot of, uh, we've got a, a teacher with cancer, we've got all sorts of teachers who do not feel safe. So even though we feel safe, there are still some teachers, because of extenuating circumstances, who do not feel safe. They are there, doing the work in school, um, and any minute, something could happen. So the, the emotional, social impact that this virus has had has really affected some of them negatively. They are scared, but generally speaking... But generally speaking, we're all there. We're all teaching, we're all doing our jobs. So we do this.
How could they be able to feel safe in their job? Or is it impossible?
I, I don't think that we can make them feel safe. We can give them all of the facts and figures, we can do that. But they have such an ingrained sense of danger from this that... I mean, it's a few, it's not a whole bunch of people. But those, those teachers are worried. But like I said, there is safety. There is safety on all of our campuses. The majority of our teachers feel safe, all of our students feel safe. Or else, we wouldn't be here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you take a word, or have any questions?
Chili, I do, I'm sorry. Yes, I, I don't know, being, being in this new world that we're in right now, and as a business owner, we've all had to really adapt and learn a whole new set of skill sets that we didn't have before this. And so I applaud all, all the teachers and admin. These students are learning, they, they are learning a whole new skill set that is a byproduct of the situation, that they'll be able to take with their careers and, and moving forward. You know, they go to college, look at these are the challenges that they're going to have also. So I just, I applaud you, and I applaud the students, and it takes a lot of hard work and collaboration. So thank you.
You have a word?
One more thing.
Yes.
Sorry. I do hear across the state, people ask me all the time, our members, on our roleings, and the rest of the state is just impressed, you know, on how well we are doing this team. So, so thank you. I get to brag about you guys a lot, so.
Yeah, I feel very grateful. Based on somehow some other schools having a struggle, and where they're having to climb up with technology and stuff like that, where we started way ahead of the game. Wow, what a blessing that was to me. A complete difference for our students ever.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Lauer has a question.
I will listen.
You hear me?
Okay. And it seems like it's a real struggle for some of the students for their assignments, turning them in. And like Mr. Ibis said, it all comes down sometimes to culture and depending where they, where they live, and that'll take it from the parents. What do you think will be the impact of the grades? Because not all the kids have the same health at home.
We're definitely seeing that impact, and we have real concerns. I'll tell you that today I spent probably three and a half to four hours calling the parents. And, and kids, like, running down the list of phone numbers to try and call and get ahold of them, calling them at work, calling their aunt, to call them, to call them. I am concerned about that. I am concerned about kids who, who aren't able to come to school. We had a young lady that we called, and she wants to come to school, but she can't, because in her family, they've lost five people to fill it through extended, and they just can't. Her mom's, no way, she wishes she could come. But there's, there's some real fear out there. And there are very many different circumstances of that that we're finding out as we're making calls, where kids are in very different places. And with that, I mean, as a teacher, and the other ones that you've heard from, are really being extra creative about ways that we can reach them. Expending time that they have to work on, they're just finding different ways for them to display the knowledge, and not sticking with one idea like, "This is the only way everybody's going to learn." If that student is, is traveling, there, there are times where on Google meets and kids are in cars. We're just, we have concerns, and it's a constant process of reevaluating our, our teaching and finding out where kids are. That, that's part of the process, for me.
I'd say we're all concerned on the passing grades of students, and the number of students passing. The students that we, we actually touch, we actually see, either online or other, are doing well. Those that we don't, we struggle. We reach out to them. A lot of the calls that we make to COVID, we find out, both from, I don't always trust the student, but both from the student and the parent, that the kids are working. And there's a lot in the, in the COVID community, I would say, that the parents are okay with the kid working during the school day, during, whenever, because that's when the job is, and maybe that's when they need the job, and I understand that. But that, those students, those same students have not necessarily been taking advantage of the online Canvas curriculum that they could do, if they flex their time. And we're, we're working with that, with parent contact, with calls, with the reach-outs, and, and try to get the students to, and parents to understand that, that school is their job at this age. Jobs will come later.
As a senior teacher, I have a little bit of a different viewpoint than, let's say, our freshman students' teachers. It's, it's terribly important that we understand the extenuating circumstances that surround some of our kids, and the families that they live with. And just like Norm said, a lot of my seniors who do not show up face-to-face, and who do not come to the live streaming, and who do not show up on Wednesdays, it's, like he said, it's because they're working. About five students in one class period, and they're the only ones with jobs in their families. They are the breadwinners for their family. So they cannot come, they cannot do it. When they get home, they're exhausted. They, they just, they're trotting, but it's, it's imperative. They have such familial loyalty that they're going to do what's right for their family. And I guess they'll suffer the consequences, is what they're thinking. And that, that is something that we are trying desperately to figure out ways to help them as teachers.
Any stats right now, or will there be any stats, any, just to get an idea where we're at?
I, I know that our senior teachers have looked at some stats. This by no means is something throughout the whole school. But 62% of all of our in-person kids are passing at this point. Some of the ones that aren't passing are so close to passing, I'm gonna throw them in and say by the end of the semester, we'll have a grand majority of those kids passing. 63% of the distance learners are passing. But those 40% of those distance learners are, are the ones that we're targeting strongly with, because we have to do something for them. And that's why we need to come up with all sorts of, you know, ways to... So what if you're, what are you doing, what are you doing? Let's try to make something possible for them. We don't have stats that I know of that will give us that information. I'm assuming that it's a lower number, but there's enough of them that, that's alarming in certain ways.
Is, are the percentages equal in all the schools, or are they different?
Oh, I doubt it. I, I'm sure that everything in the school is different.
Yeah, I thought, um, I'm, in stats, you mean like the number of kids that are working that aren't able to come to either the, the live sessions on campus, or?
And everything, right?
It's hard to say. Sometimes, we're finding out that they're working, last week, like, I just found out, one of, one of my students was working, like, so it's kind of hard to collect all that data on our, our students. We are tracking, and our student tracker, who we're talking to, where we're finding them. And so I think in some ways, that can be collected at some point through our Google Sheets. But I don't, I know that we don't have particularly have all that data with us. But, but it is a surprising number for me that I've got.
Okay, no, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, because I know it's, it's difficult to track all these kids. I'm just trying to see, just to get an idea, or will there be any kind of number in the future that we can just kind of target those kids maybe?
For sure.
So I've been quiet way too long, because this is the longest I've ever been quiet. There's one, there's one support group that's not here today. So when these stats come out, or these students who are struggling or falling through the cracks, we have our drop-off prevention specialists that will, that have been working with every teacher when they haven't been able to make contact, or they're not doing well. Just for example, down in San Luis, I was talking to a drop-off prevention specialist just a couple days ago, Rico Conde, and he knows the names of all 28 students. That's what we have down in San Luis right now, that are not accounted for. Out of 2,700, there's only 28 students that he's tracking down right now. However, once grades start coming out, that number will increase. I mean, it will. But he's there, and just like every drop-off prevention specialist on each campus is there to help try to find those students and get them connected to the teachers, who are making multiple attempts to give them opportunities to prove that they have mastered it. So there, we, we do have another support group that's not here today that will also help with that.
That's what I'll, yeah, you know the plan, that's...
Yeah, the, the plan changes every single week. We bring more people in, the plan.
I'd also like to clarify, on grading, we've worked very hard over many, many years to get to a point where time is not the master, that learning is the master. And so a student, you know, it used to be, six weeks, boom, you're done. Sorry if you didn't get it, you got the F. It's really a shame, see you in makeup school, or see you in this other magical place where you're supposed to capture that learning. And that's a real shift in thoughts. It's definitely a shift from when I was in school, and most of us. So it's a very, another big change that we've taken on in Yuma Union High School District over the past five to seven years. So the F rate is very concerning. However, the end of the six weeks doesn't mean that that's going to be where you are at the end of the semester as a learner. Our teachers, as you heard tonight, have come full circle to talk about mastering the standards, not turning, not merely turning in assignments. So what, what is an F data this week? Yes, it's higher. It's higher than it was last year at this time, no doubt. However, with all of the work to try to capture the learning, we're hopeful that the students will continue to respond to the teachers, and the teachers just continue to knock it out of the park as they learn their new skills.
You guys are good.
Any other questions?
There's, are there any more questions? I know that we're running late, but if you have any more questions, you know, we can talk, we can talk about this. I'll be along.
There are three more teachers left, am I correct?
No, there are not two more. Well, I'd like to have the other two standing to be recognized now. So, Diego and Tim.
Thank you for...
They're all so hard on me.
They drew the good straw, you see that now.
I will say, I think our students procrastinate too. Like, let's be honest, there he is. So this progress report, I already know, I'm getting a lot of assignments just for this progress report to grade. And then I know that it's semester, you're going to get it too. Now, is that everybody? No, but we are dealing with kids. I was the same type of kid, you know, you can give me a deadline, and if I leave assignments open, I know I can do it, but I have a Netflix show I gotta finish right now, you know? So eventually, we know some assignments are coming. Now, is that going to be everybody? No, there is a fear, but, but you know that that influx is coming. It happens every year. It's just, again, when you're at home, that's kind of, we can't be on them, you know, in the classroom when you're there. So, but, but I know that that is coming, and I think that's going to drop relatively significantly. But, but yes, they are higher.
I'd like to say one, the, the parents that are contacting me, and they're all over the board hybrid learning, they want certified day, they're afraid to send their child to school, and so they're doing online learning. But the one consistent I'm hearing from them is their gratitude to the teachers and to the counselors, to the assistance that their child is getting, and, and the high quality of our teachers and counselors. And they're very grateful for that. They can be all over the board on everything else, but that is a consistent that I hear from them. So we do appreciate all the hard work that you all are doing, and we do understand that this is very difficult time, you guys, and a lot more work than what historically you've been asked to do.
A lot easier, for sure. Yeah.
So we do appreciate that. And that, that is being recognized by the parents and the community.
We, we will take that back. Sometimes the teachers need an added one. We will share that one, and that's very nice. If I may say, is this thing on?
No, I think that is green. Which is that?
Glad I wasn't talking earlier.
I'm gonna stand up, because I'm a, I'm a student of World War II. And I, and I bring that up because there was a book written about the Greatest Generation. Because that's what had to be done then. That was a, that was, we couldn't lose that war, it had to be done. And what you're doing now is the same thing. I'm not that surprised that teachers who are tasked with teaching our children care about them too, just as much as we do. And so you chase them down, because that's part of the job. But it's way beyond the part of the job. And thank you very much. I can't tell you how, and I'm, and I'm just pleased, I'm enlightened, I'm empowered, I'm everything, that you people are, are fighting a hell of a battle, and you are our next greatest generation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
I think that's all the questions.
I think you guys are due.
You guys are next.
When I was hired for this job, and I always hear people introducing themselves as superintendent, usually it's the word proud superintendent, and I said that wasn't quite where I was. And now you can see where I've been fired as superintendent. And why I do get fired up for and about our students and the professionals that meet with them every single day. So I, I am quite passionate, this is personal for all of us. I, I do believe these people would sit and talk in this room all night long about what we are doing, and mostly how to do it better. That just never stops. And I just, I, I can never get enough of the opportunity to hear them, because I don't get that opportunity as much. So thank you. I just want to remind everyone that we are all somebody's son or daughter. We all are unique. We all have a heart, we all have a soul, and we're all struggling. Your entire professional career has been turned completely upside down, and yet you come every single day, and, and you keep trying to do more. And all of us are doing that at this time. Thank you for setting your own personal struggles aside, because again, COVID-19 has affected every single family in many, many ways. Learning is not the same. I'm going to tell you right now, I don't think learning, teaching and learning will ever be the same again, and I hope not. Because I think what we're doing right now, although we miss our kids, and we want to do it with them in the classroom at some point, but this has just exponentially increased the skill set of, of all of us in how we do business. Advancement of academics is not at the same rate, and we know that we want that higher no matter what. But this is a global battle, this is not unique to Yuma, Arizona. It's just that in Yuma, Arizona, we want to do it better, and we want to crack the code to make it the very best. I just hope that we can all come together at some point in this community and battle the real demon, which is COVID-19, rather than for, for so many professionals to pick apart the expertise in, in public education for K-12. We're all here and responsible, and no one takes that to heart, and harder than a teacher or administrator. But we want everybody to remain safe and pursue the lifelong dreams and opportunities through and after COVID-19, because there will be an after. We want everybody back in classrooms every day, metrics and protocols are quite clear. Behaviors of people away from school need to please reflect the noise of craving to be back in school in person five days a week. And I know if it can be done anywhere, it's going to be done in Yuma County. And that's why we're still here. So thank you for the overtime. Thank you for being in the room this evening. And Ms. Kravitz has another question.
May I ask you something?
Sure. Turn on your microphone, please.
I'm not using the microphone, because I don't, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll project. I, I think this was a great cheerleading session, and it makes me feel so greater. And I'm so thrilled with every piece of information that I get. But there's a group that we didn't hear from today, which are the students. And that's who we represent. We represent the students. And I am deeply concerned about social well-being, and mental well-being, and COVID fatigue, and all of those things. And just like somebody out there said about statistics with how many people are passing or failing, statistics can all be skewed. And the COVID numbers that are in this county are not just from people in this county. Our borders are not closed. We have people passing through all the time. And so although we all need to own our responsibility, and mask up, and stay safe, and use hand sanitizer, and please, keep hallway doors open, and limit our numbers. Social distancing was created and encouraged to prevent an overwhelming run on our hospital resources, so that we didn't have to... on our hospital resources so that we didn't have to triage and determine who lives and who dies. COVID is a real thing. It's true. And we have no, we have before and now we have our new normal. And I want to do everything, and I know everybody in this room does, to get the students back in the classroom. And so this is my question that I put before the board right now, in front of everybody. I wrote down all the numbers in all of the schools. People that are here in person right now and people that are online. And if we did five-day-a-week in-person offerings, the same amount of students would most likely, although I don't know, be here. And it's still more than half less than it was last year in your classroom. And so I feel like we really have three concerns as we move forward in this school year. Above and beyond education and reaching out and keeping track and technology and nutrition and everything else that we have to do. We really have three things that I would like us to focus on, which is, what's best for our students mentality? What's best for them socially? How are we preparing for them to be college and graduate? That's number one. What's best for our kids' education? Is this the best learning method for most of our kids? I don't know. And lastly, what's the best for the health and wellbeing for the community? Including our educators, our family members and our kids. And I just don't know that the hybrid method that we're offering right now is the best answer. I don't believe it is. And I love what you're doing. And I don't know how you're doing it because you're being asked from seven in the morning until seven at night to work, 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 work. Call, call parents. Have meetings. Learn how to do this. Learn how to do that. You've been a teacher for, even if you've been a teacher for five years, you have to redo everything. I don't know how you're doing it. And students are tired of screen time. They're tired of looking at a screen. So we want them to turn in stuff. We want them to do stuff. They don't want to be on a screen. When they're in a classroom, the flipped classroom, the let's all be on a computer, they're there because they want to be in person, not on a computer. And the many, many, many parents, students and staff that I have heard from would like another option. So I would like it to be on the agenda for next month that we discuss other options and how we can move towards five-day-only in-person. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Kravitz, if you want an agenda item, you have to narrow it down to a specific agenda item.
I would like an agenda item to be placed on the November Board meeting for consideration, discussion and possible action for the reopening of schools to a traditional count, to a traditional five-day, to some form of five-day-a-week in-person like for this year. How's that?
Okay, we can't, we'll consider your request. We can't take any action.
No, no, no. I mean, was that better?
That is a little more specific, yes.
May I have clarification on that? So in that event, as we've discussed, so that would mean, are you proposing for this agenda item that it is in-person learning, five days a week, or Yoda, or nothing, for the students who are, who have chosen with their families to remain home?
I think that that would have to come out of the discussion. I don't know.
So to be clear, that would be, in my mind, the agenda item because that is the only other option. We would be removing a choice. So that would be part of the.
There has been such a thing as having too many choices and not enough people to deliver them. Absolutely.
Sure, but in your agenda item that you're proposing, I just want to make sure that we're very clear in what we're proposing or what you're recommending.
I am proposing discussion and possible action for reopening schools. Not removing choices, but changing. I would like to talk about reopening. How about? To a five-day, not getting rid of the hybrid model. Not, I missed the focus. Not getting rid of the virtual. But our hybrid numbers were supposed to be because we wanted to have 50% less kids in the classroom, which we're already doing. Now with the hybrid, we're having 25%.
Our hybrid models were put in place because families needed a choice and our teachers wanted to stay connected to their students and allow for that choice.
I'm confused. Why are you moving to a way? I just want to discuss it. I would like it in another agenda meeting. I don't, if we don't, we don't put that in.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed,赞成. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.